Hereby open Board of Selecting meeting, October 22nd, 2018, at 6:00 PM at the Rutland Public Library. This meeting is being taped by Rutland Cable for live view as well as YouTube upload, which you can access via our website. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under one law, indivisible, indivisible and just.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to sign Treasury warrant, nine in favor?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have one set of minutes.
Motion to approve Tuesday, October 9th, minutes at the Rutland Public Library.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you. Poll hearing. Let's see here, come on up. And hereby open poll hearing for Brittonall Drive, National Grid to install one J.O. pole on Brittonall Drive, beginning, and I won't read the rest, intersection of Campbell Street, 15 feet in a southerly direction, location as shown on plan attached. Welcome.
Thank you.
Name and address, or name, I know where you're from.
James here.
Thank you. So can you just tell us, just give us the rough, basic?
There's a new house being built at 102, and the only way to service it is to add a pole to that line that's existing there.
Okay. And obviously, Brittonall is narrow and a dirt road, and Gary's location has been confirmed, approved?
Yeah, I went out the first time at 102 Brittonall, and it was only three feet off of the travelway. I requested a move, re-inspected it, and checked it, and it's now five feet, so TPW approves.
Okay. Anybody from the Board have any questions?
If Gary's good with it, I'm good with it.
Anybody from the public have any questions? Okay, hereby close the hearing, and could I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the poll request by National Grid.
Yep.
Service in the proximity of 102 Brittonall Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, do you have time for a question?
Absolutely.
We talk about the land underneath the big power poles, so the big service lines. National Grid manages that land. I know we get a letter annually regarding mechanical and chemical control of all of the plantings. What type of public access is there to those lands?
I don't have an answer to that question for you, because that's distribution.
Okay.
It's a completely different area of National Grid.
Okay, not your thing. Thank you. We'll check into it.
I can tell you a little bit.
Okay.
It's the people's land that's underneath it.
Okay.
Only, not National Grid. They leased the land for 100 years.
Okay.
All right.
So it's under lease by National Grid? We'd have to look at the lease document?
But it's the owner of the land.
Okay.
Whoever owns the land underneath it.
Huh, so it could be multiple owners.
Right.
Okay.
Because I own land over Princeton, boy runs over it.
Oh.
I can do anything I want underneath it, providing I don't disturb the poles around the outside.
Interesting. Okay.
But if you're thinking of putting soccer fields underneath it, or something like that?
No.
Soccer fields maybe, but not soccer fields. More towards the field.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Rebecca Toddle, we're right on time.
Very nice.
Yeah.
That's good. Maybe I could slow you down here a little bit. Hopefully not. So I have a couple things. First, I wanted to just inform the Board that myself and Lisa Sheeman were certified by the Mass Treasure Collectors Association as municipal collector, municipal collectors, so that gives me the designation of a certified municipal collector and treasurer, which was part of the goals when I was originally hired, was to be certified as both of those, so, and also designates Lisa as a certified municipal assistant collector. So I just wanted to recognize Lisa for her hard work. It's like three years of classes and a three-hour test that you have to go through to get the certification, so I just wanted to say that she's a great asset to the office and should be happy that we're both certified and able to do our jobs the way we're supposed to.
It's huge, Becky, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And send our thanks to Lisa.
I will. So the other piece of business I have is our town retirees' insurance plan is set to renew January 1st, 2019. We had, Fallon is the carrier that we have with it. It's a companion care plan that goes along with Medicare that the retirees are required to have if they're over 67, sorry, 65. And I had budgeted for a 10% increase in the rates, then it came in at a 4.09% increase, which is good. Their current monthly cost that the retirees pay is 84.49, and this would bring it up to 87.95 per month, and that comes directly out of their retirement pension checks. So last year, we did make some changes to their plans by increasing their co-pays for prescriptions. So with this, the fact that I had budgeted for 10% and it came in at four, it fit within the budget that I had planned for health insurance, so we, in talking with the Insurance Advisory Committee, decided not to make any changes to the plan and to go with the 4.09% increase. So I'm looking here, I'm here today to ask you for your approval on that rate, so that I can move forward with Fallon and accept that rate for January 1st.
So moved, do you have that, Abby? I don't want to repeat all that.
Before we vote, I just have one question. You wrote that four of the seven members responded favorably to move forward, were the other three?
They didn't respond.
Didn't respond?
Yeah, to the emails.
So four to, okay.
Yeah.
All right, any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? All right, and the last piece that I'm going to need signatures for is we are refinancing
our debt that we have on the Rutland Heights property, and also lumped into that, we're doing a one-year ban for the ambulance and police cruiser that we had approved in, at the May 12th, 2018 meeting, annual town meeting, which is a debt-exclusion debt. The debt for the ambulance and police cruiser is $308,710, and the renewal for the Rutland Heights property is for $394,000. By combining them, it gave us more, it's like 702, we're borrowing 702,710,000 dollars. And the interest rate came in at 2.55%, which it's slowly creeping up. If I kind of gave you a listing of the history of the Rutland Heights debt, the interest rates that we've been paying, last year when we refinanced, it was at 1.27%. So you can see, even with the extra money included in that, it's jumped up to 2.55%. And that's just the way the market is going with borrowing money. There's more money when you're investing, because the interest rates are up there, but also the interest rates are going up when you're borrowing money. So it was Eastern Bank that won the bid, and we are doing this as a one-year ban. It saves, which saves us on debt issuance costs, the interest rate, and hopefully, we can look at next year. Our financial advisor had also suggested that we possibly permanently finance both the Rutland Heights in this amount for a period of time, because interest rates don't seem to be going down, they keep going up. So if we permanently finance it, we may get a better interest rate. So what I need is some signatures on borrowing documents and to approve the borrowing of the 702, 710, with the award going to Eastern Bank for 2.55%.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Well, the, so the ambulance and police cruiser, the amount for that, that was already approved by?
Yeah.
The Town General at last May's.
Right, so I don't know that I really need a vote from you?
Right.
On that, I just need the documents signed.
So that's, okay, so there's no problem there. The 394 for the Heights, that's for the Heights, was that before the?
Yeah, that's already, yeah, that's already like an ongoing ban that we have with them. And the reason we're doing it on a one-year basis was with the hopes that we would sell the property and we wouldn't have to renew the ban.
Right.
So, but we haven't yet.
Okay. Give me the wording again? Motion, are these two separate motions, or one?
No, the borrowing is one borrowing that was already approved to do the borrowing, but we're accepting the bid from Eastern Bank and approving the loan documents.
I'll make a motion that we approve the borrowing of $702,710 for a one-year ban for the Rutland Heights and ambulance and police cruiser refinance, with the award going to the Eastern Bank.
Second.
Add friendly amendment to sign the loan documents.
Oh, and to sign the loan documents, yeah.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Thank you.
Just so I can take it back and send it in.
Yeah.
I'll give a speed up on some of the details. I think it's just on the front, it's by lines here. Except.
She said just on the front here, these by lines.
Phew.
I'll need to take work down here.
Thank you.
Obviously hindsight 2020, but had we known, shouldn't have done a five-year borrow with the rates that we had. I mean, it's been seven years now.
And sell them.
Thanks, Becky.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Abby probably gave you the warrant to sign for the state election, which is coming up in two weeks, two weeks from tomorrow, November 6th, so we just need a majority of your Board's signatures, because we'll have it, the warrant posted tomorrow, and I can leave it and get it back tomorrow, correct? Or do you want me to pick it up?
Do it right now.
It's up to Abby.
Take it.
And early voting started today and runs through December 2nd, which is Friday, and uh?
November 2nd.
No, November, yes, thank goodness, because it was a really busy day today. We had 51, 55 people come in and take advantage of early voting, so we're keeping track of the figures, because we're using the same hours as we did two years ago for the presidential. And two years ago, we had 61 people show up on day one, and today it was 55.
Here's one of them, he's got a sticker.
Yes, yes. So it was good, and I think it was a media blitz over the weekend, so that got a lot of people out.
Yeah.
But other than that, we're good to go.
All right, you're good.
So, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
You are here. I saw you walk in.
Okay, there was a mistake on my part.
Before you talk about your mistakes, why don't you introduce yourself?
Okay, I'm sorry.
People in town rarely get to see you. They all, all they see is the sticker and your name on it, so.
My name is Edward Seidler. I've been the town sealer for Rutland since 2007, when I took it away from the state to bring some extra money into the town. When a state does towns that are below 5,000 population, they do the job that we do for nothing, but we pay it, we pay the state in our taxes and everything else. So this way, the money I bring in stays in the town. In '07, I put in a fee schedule, which the Board approved. In '16, nine years later, I increased it, and by my error, I dropped three fees, the three fees that I believe are in front of you now, which became law under Mass General Law, Chapter 94, Section 184B through E, which is the Consumer Protection Act. We do the increase, the basic regulation in that law was to protect stores so they don't go out of business for undercharging and protecting the customers that we don't get rooked by overcharging. So we do what's called scanning inspections. Customer in the state, basically in the whole country, is supposed to know what they're paying for the product before they get to the register. That's why you have the labels on the shelves. This law also helped the waiver regulation put in just a handful of years ago. Stores, if wanted, paid the state division of standards a fee to drop the pricing on each item and only have it on the shelf. But the customer still knows what they're paying before they get to the register. And it also, if you get overcharged on a product, which the price is less than $10, you get that one item free. If it's over 10, you get the lower of the pricing. And like I said, it was my mistake in '16, and how I did it, I don't know. I dropped these three fees from the schedule, and I just picked it up late this year.
No problem.
Okay.
And so, these are, with the exception of the 4 through 11 scanners, that is $25 less than what the state doesn't mandate. None of the fees are mandated by the state. They are controlled by the local boards or councilmen.
Are these consistent with the neighboring towns?
The only one that's different is Holden, they have the 150 instead of the 125.
Okay.
But here, my calculations is that there are four stores in town that do scanning, and they all have, I believe, less than four registers.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's not a price per register.
Mm-hmm.
It's a price what they have in the store. So like, using the example, the big Y in Holden, their fee, in fact, their fee is 350, because I'd been doing them for 22 years, so.
Okay. Questions?
So this scanner, scanning doesn't apply to somebody that doesn't have it?
Correct.
Right.
They have to scan to get the inspection. The stores that are in Rutland probably would get each store 50 items, and they have to get, by state statute, 98% or better to pass. They fail, they get charged, and we come back.
Have you seen any issues with Rutland merchants?
No, have not.
Nothing like that?
Scale, the scales are in good shape that I've done. In fact, Rutland, as of last Thursday or Friday, is complete for my inspections for the calendar year.
Except for these.
Yeah, but these, one thing I don't, I do not do, if I raise fees during the year, it's not really fair to start them when they're approved.
Okay.
That's why I put on the top, effective 1119.
Okay.
That makes it fair for everybody. So there'll be, if I don't get to a store, let's say I don't get to a store for now to December, the other stores are going to say, well, we've had to pay, why don't they?
Yep.
So this way, everything is equal.
Okay.
Let me ask a question before the motion.
Yeah.
So last week, the Rutland Council on Aging put together a very nice presentation on elder fraud, and one of the big topics that was discussed is this onslaught of skimming machines, credit card skimming machines?
Yes.
That you're seeing at the pumps, or they're slipping over at a register. Have you seen any of that? Well, certainly, have you seen anything close to that in Rutland? Or are we experiencing anything like that in our area that you know?
Uh, in central Mass, there were two skimmers found at a gas station. It's, right now, we're not getting, Mass is not getting hit heavy. Florida is abundance of skimmers. What we've been told by the FBI who was involved is that these people that are doing it are told, take, they go so far, traveling by car or truck, stop at a point, go 10 miles out, put your skimmers. They're all electronics, so they're not at the station?
Right.
When they're getting, you know, they can be a few miles away or a block away, and they're getting the information.
Yep, they come back with a master key, pop open the gas pump.
Right, and they do it, they, from what we have found out, technically, it doesn't, it falls under our jurisdiction, because we do gas stations.
Right.
99% of your pumps are electronics now. You still have a handful of manuals. And that's where they're finding them. They found them down south in some ATMs.
Yep.
That's why you see if, in fact, the stations in Rutland all have them, you see little strips that are blocking either keys or blocking where they get to, where you put your cards in. The station is supposed to be checking them every shift or every morning. If any are broken, they're supposed to call the police, because they're the ones that will bring up the charges if they can find the people.
Great.
Are you going to be adding this to your full fee schedule?
Yes.
Okay.
There's no changes on the full, on the schedule that was approved in '16.
Okay, so you're going to send us a full, updated schedule with this on it?
Sure.
Okay, do we have?
No, no problem.
Do we have the schedule? We must.
Probably filed from when it was?
Probably filed.
I have, I have one, in fact.
Oh, we don't need it the second.
No, no.
I just tried to make sure, so, Anita, I can't find it on the website. We don't have him down as a department, I wonder.
No, I'm with, in fact, I just, I just questioned it, and Lynn told me, my budget goes in with bills in the building, it's into his?
Okay.
Budget. So I guess I fall under him as a immediate boss.
So maybe we can list you, maybe we can work on making that happen and getting your fee schedule up, so people have it available to them?
Sure.
And then, do you want our office to do this, or do you want to do it?
No, that.
No, I mean notifying the three affected businesses that affected in 2019, their scanners are going to be assessed a fee for an inspection.
I'll probably be visiting them with the full copy of the regulations.
Okay, great.
Before the first of the year.
Okay, so they'll be aware of what's coming?
They'll be aware before the first of the year, what's coming.
Thank you.
With the full, it's about 25 pages long.
Excellent. They'll love that.
Do we have any businesses with, for more scanners?
No, he doesn't think so, right?
I don't believe so.
So it's just?
The only one that might would be Wartusit Lumber, the store. That might be the only one. But I think, I know he has one, maybe two in the back, and one up front.
Hmm.
Three.
I believe that's what it is.
Right.
Right.
Probably gonna add.
But I believe they're all under four.
Okay.
But you never can tell who moves out and who moves in.
Yeah, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good information. I need the motion to approve this change to the fee schedule.
I'll make a motion that the Board approve the updated fee schedule from our, the town's sealer of weights and measures, Edward R. Seidler.
Seidler, I apologize, I said it wrong.
That's okay.
Sorry.
Second.
And that's effective 11, 2019. And can we just make a note that Mr. Seidler has indicated that he'll be notifying the businesses that that's a change coming? All right, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Okay, I will get to Abby.
An updated form.
An updated form.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Can the Board go back one step? I'm feeling like we should have taken a vote when we signed the state election warrant, considering it's?
Oh, yes.
Given under our hands, so could we, could I have a motion to sign the warrant for the 2018 state election?
Make a motion that we sign the 2018 state election warrant as presented by Town Clerk.
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Onward. Mr. Crane. Look at that, he was paying attention, he went to come in.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Peter Crane, 11 Nate's Way, and I'm here to talk to you about bylaw modernization. I have to apologize, I don't have a PowerPoint, as unusual as that. Uh, I have to apologize, I don't have a PowerPoint, as unusual as that is. Ah. Uh, so what is my, bylaw modernization? Well, to understand that, we have, to understand where we're gonna go, we have to talk about where we are and where we've come from. Town of Rutland went along without any bylaws at all until 1895, when the problem of truant scholars became serious enough that they wrote a bylaw to manage and regulate that. That bylaw existed for nine years, until 1904, when the, uh, town repealed that bylaw and created two bylaws. The first bylaw was about 10, general government, and the second bylaw addressed things like constables and public decency, and yes, the penalties for frightening horses. That went on until 1940, when somebody, I don't know who exactly started this, but a committee was put together to look at and, um, to draw up and compile a set of bylaws for the town of Rutland, and thus was formed the Bylaw Committee. They went along for one year, and in 1941, they published this booklet of six bylaws, which was the town's total code. Since then, nobody's looked at bylaws as a unit, as a totality, as a corpus. The addition and the amendment of bylaw has been, depending upon how you look at it, organic or haphazard. Uh, the application of technologies to put these online did not help the readability. They are quite frankly, a mess because they're not well organized. The body itself isn't organized. All the bylaws look and feel different, and they aren't, there aren't any visual cues to help you understand the structure of them. And so about 18 months ago, town clerk and I began an effort for a process called codification. Codification is very simply the, the formatting and the, and fixing the presentation to make things more consistent and more readable. So, Ms. White, would you please give me a number from 1 to 8?
7.
7. How wonderful. Chapter 7, yes, we're organized by chapters in this new system, is natural resources. Jeff, would you please pick a number from 1 to 3?
3.
3. That is our stretch energy code, one that happens to have just been passed. But you can imagine, the old bylaws are a series of black text, and that's all you see is itty bitty letters. And what we're doing is changing presentation completely to include clear titling, clear structure, uh, actual very clear history of them, and we're doing this to all the bylaws.
Nice.
The codification effort was based on the notion that the town clerk has the power to, to change, to make non-substantive changes to bylaws without approval at town meeting. This was great. You can, our notion was, we'd get these all codified, and then we'd run them through the right people, all the boards that are impacted by them, and get approval from the town and the town administrator and legal counsel, that we could just put them in place and, and pass them and adopt the codified bylaws. Shortly before the last town meeting, at a conversation with the AG's office, our town clerk learned unfortunately that some of the changes we were making do not fall into their definition of non-substantive. For example, if you change the identification of a paragraph from 1 to A, that is considered a substantive change. Which means that all the work we've done to avoid going to town meeting, just because of the delays and the work, we don't get to avoid. That's life. Also, just before the last town meeting, in fact, minutes before the last town meeting, I had a conversation with our town council. She knows about the effort that's been going on. She's reviewed some of the articles, some of the bylaws that we've put through, and she suggested we get together and discuss what we're trying to accomplish and modernizing the bylaws in total. Well, what do we need to modernize? We have a whole 35 or so bylaws. Well, some of these bylaws haven't changed since 1941, or the 70s, or the 90s. Mass general law has changed since then, and there have been a number of court cases that change the, the limits of what bylaws are allowed to regulate. And it is our and town council's opinion that we need to go through these to bring them all up to snuff into the 21st century. So we're talking about combining the codification effort and its town meeting requirement with a modernization to bring all these bylaws up to speed. That's what it is. How do we go about doing it? Town clerk and I have been working on codification for 18 months, and we're pretty far along. And mo, and codification is relatively speaking, a very easy job. You don't like the format, you change the format. You don't like a little word, have to go to town meeting anyway, change a word. Wanna restructure things a little bit because the layout isn't clear, that's easy. But when it comes to modernization, neither of us have the body of knowledge necessary, nor the, the duration, the length of knowledge in the town and in its bylaws to do the job properly. So the right way, we think, to do this is to create a new committee, called the Bylaw Committee. And its job, its first job at the very least, would be to finish the codification and modernization effort of this. It is my opinion that if that committee were to start, be brought into existence very soon and were to work very hard, that this effort could be completed by next annual town meeting. What happens after that? That's really up to the board. My notion was a temporary committee that would drop out of existence after that town meeting, it would be done. But there has been talk for quite some time now about having a longstanding, uh, in fact, a permanent bylaw subcommittee. Uh, which is right, I leave that to the board. How many people should be on the committee? My first thought was five. There are, other people have different opinions. The only person I say who's absolutely, really has to be on that committee is our town clerk. Sorry, Anita, I'm signing you up for more work. Uh, I, I think that's all, that's the, that's the end of the presentation. Are there questions I can answer for you?
So the new board members should know, and we have a history with this. We've been talking about this for quite some time. Certainly when Margaret came on, Bob, I know when we had our first meeting with you, you sort of questioned the process. We're not sure exactly when it happened or how organic it was, but as I think you know, the planning board's bylaw subcommittee began to have oversight over all of the bylaws, including the general. And those are two separate sets, so right now there are 31, I think plus sign, right, 32, general bylaws. That, that does not include the 13 articles that are under zoning, and, and obviously that's a very different thing. Um, we've always known that at some point, there needs to be a sort of parting of the ways. There might be some overlap, but as it stands right now, our general bylaws are only being reviewed by people from the planning board, and it just, it became a kind of a logistical issue that we don't see in other communities. This is probably the best opportunity we have to get that process started, where you give a true, and it would not be a subcommittee, it would be a bylaw committee. A standing bylaw committee that actually would be, at some point, creating its own bylaw to have, saying, here we are, just like the finance committee has its own bylaw that states what its purpose is and states what its structure is. But their first job would be what Peter just outlined, which is the codification and modernization. It's a, it's a great first step. It's a great learning process too, for anybody who wants to be on this new committee. As a board, um, we can almost immediately start this by making it ad hoc, and that's probably appropriate, cause this transition needs to be, um, kind of slow and steady, right? Obviously, the planning board's, um, bylaw subcommittee has been doing an enormous amount of work, and we're gonna see a lot of that at this fall town meeting, in particular with all the work on marijuana, which was zoning anyway. But many others, which I think are coming up as you do the codification, are sitting there going, yeah, this, these need a second look, a third look, and, and, um, it's gonna be a lot of work, a lot of work for a lot of people probably, over the course of-
The sentence I didn't say, that I should not have omitted, was, this also will cost money. At the end of the day, town council should be involved at the beginning of the process to help guide us, figure out the right target where we should be aiming. And at the end of the day, town council needs to review every bylaw before it goes to town meeting. I don't know how much it's gonna cost. I haven't seen how much any bylaw review has, has cost, even begin to estimate it. Uh, the town council did say that she was willing to try and come up with a flat rate for that process, but we haven't had further discussions since then, so it's, it's worth a, a fresh discussion with town council to see what that would, what she thinks that would be.
So, Anita, what do you have within your budget? Can you absorb any of that? Is there, is there a number in anyone's head?
Not in the town clerk's budget. The, the only thing that I can relate it to is, um, I think it was around 2006, 2007, the town used a firm called General Code to revise the zoning bylaws. And I looked back and I think that the fee, and that was, that was a lot of extensive work. They went back through every zoning change from 1962, when the zoning bylaw, um, came into effect. And I think, um, it was a while ago, I looked, I think we paid General Code about $4,200. But I believe that our council also reviewed the changes at the same time, so. And Peter works for free, so we wouldn't have to use General Code.
Always looking for a suck, a volunteer to finish things off.
So I think that's your rock and a hard place for your timing, cause I know you have a very aggressive plan to try to get some of those onto the May town meeting. And in the absence of putting an article on the warrant next week that we would do proactively, because the warrant is closed to the departments, you'd end up waiting too late. There'd be no time to do it if we waited until spring town meeting to appropriate funds at that point. So now you're looking at a whole other cycle.
Right.
And we don't have a number.
Yeah, funds you don't know the amount.
I, I, I can't begin to guess the scale of it unfortunately.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
It was $4,200 years ago, and that was just for the zoning part.
That was for the zoning.
That was a codification effort. That wasn't the legal issue.
It wasn't a review of all the zoning.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I think Bob alluded to it. This is hours and hours and hours of kind of rabbit hole work. Okay, so I guess the question is, is the board amenable to having another discussion at a future meeting about setting up this ad hoc, uh, committee? This will be the bylaw committee, this would be their project. The question about funding this project is separate.
Need to know.
I think it's important that the town have a bylaw committee, and that takes some of the work off the planning board's sub, uh, bylaw subcommittee. And I think, with the growth that we've seen, I go back to it, like, we kinda need some oversight there.
But again, for the cost, yeah, I'm trying to think how we structure this, Peter, and not slow you down. How do we, how do we do that?
That's a great question. I don't know.
Can look at the legal budget, and, um, I can have a conversation with Lauren also and find out what's involved and, you know, any difficulties. You can always get an additional, uh, supplement in the, in the spring. I, I think I already know the answer to this question, but I mean, does the AG's office any, offer any kind of technical assistance?
In truth, I haven't looked into it. I hadn't even considered it.
I'm guessing they probably don't. I mean, I know they review all bylaws, but it might be worth an answer, but I-
I can reach out to their office.
I think it'll be no. Um, and would this committee look at zoning also, or just general?
Just general. Zoning bylaw is entirely and by statute under the planning board's authority. And so, and by the way, let me also commend the planning board's subcommittee, irrespective of how they got to doing general bylaws, they did a lot of yeoman's work to get us where we are.
Yeah.
But let's straighten away the authority correctly, do the most right thing for the town.
And it sounds like the zoning bylaws were codified mostly about 10 years ago.
That's codified, that's not-
Not modernized, right.
Yeah, but they, they have had. I think they're, especially now with the new planner, I have a feeling that they're gonna start reviewing zoning bylaws too. So, that'll be another task.
Anita, so what, how much thought should we be putting into a town charter? Which I think Peter and I briefly talked about, and you're starting to laugh, you know? Is it, is it appropriate to see this as a step in the direction of a charter? Or is this by itself its own project, get it done, and then look at a charter at a future date?
I think it should be its own project to get it done. But I, but I, I do encourage the town to start looking at, at the charter. Talked about it, it, I don't know, almost 12 years ago, it was talk, but it just didn't go any further, so. But that's a lengthy process too.
Right, years.
Depending upon the process that you choose, it's eight, it's an absolute minimum of 18 months, and nobody gets it done in 18.
Okay, so I think that'll be maybe on our goals list for our next town administrator. Okay.
The other thing that we have taught, Peter and I have talked about, is that, you know, if, like, the makeup of, of, of the general review committee, and, um, whether, you know, we should have people from different, um, boards. But I think we kind of settled on that it would be good to have, you know, residents at large. And, but then when we're reviewing, obviously, like, if we're looking at, um, the city, ask the, you know, for that section of time, we ask somebody from the finance committee, you know, or a couple, to come in during that. And when we're reviewing, um, animal control, then we would be talking to, um, the ACL officer and the police chief.
And, and public safety. I think there are many bylaws that public safety is involved in. A number of bylaws that FinCom would be involved in, treasurer, collector, DPW. Each department has sets of bylaws that they would have interest in, and we would, it would, again, it's sort of the vision I have that, that the core group would invite these other committees in at the right time. Talking about the powers of the select board, you'd all be invited in, as an example.
Thank you.
That and a couple of public here, public information meetings to really spread the word, it should sail through town meeting if it's done correctly.
So if the board is amenable, maybe, Abby, can we put this on the first meeting after town, special town meeting? Because obviously, the planning board bylaw subcommittee is doing an enormous amount of work right now, and I just, I don't wanna muddy the waters now, tonight, or in the next few weeks. So our first meeting after that, November, we will put on our agenda an ad hoc bylaw committee. Does anybody have a strong feeling about the number? It sounds like five or seven. Five, you've got the, you know, voting majority of three people.
What do neighboring towns do?
What do neighboring towns do?
I haven't looked at it. I've only considered our problems.
I would say minimum of five. I mean, and Anita, town clerk would be one, correct? Or, so-
What a true bylaw committee.
That would be four, at large, right?
How many do you have now, on the planning board bylaw committee, subcommittee?
Uh, it is the entirety of the planning board, who's five, and, uh, two citizens at large. Only one of those is filled right now.
Seven. Seven, seven. Okay, we can put some thought into that, make that decision that night. Is that okay, Abby? What is that a date for us? It's pretty late.
Um, it's December 3rd, I believe. I think the only thing we have so far is the class two books.
December 3rd?
Right.
Really? We don't, oh, we don't have a meeting on the-
Right, because the 19th would have been your regularly scheduled meeting.
Well, we couldn't do, we can do it that night, I guess, but the 19th is our, usually a quick meeting before special. It's an odd time to do it. What do you think? December? Is that putting it off too long for you?
Although I might prefer it to be faster, we have, I mean, the reality is, you're right, we don't wanna muddy the waters. We don't want to make our lives more difficult by rushing into it.
Okay. And I mean, we obviously want to be in contact now with the planning board, sort of officially, to let them know how we'll move forward with this, or at least how we think we'll move forward with it. Give them the date. They wanna come in that night too. Okay.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And in the meantime, can we get, um, start to work out like a fee, a sense of the fee schedule and everything from legal and-
Get a number.
All of that.
And apparently put a placeholder for the May town meeting for, cause he'll be ready. He'll be done. All right.
Hope, hopefully, we don't have to, we can get enough money for the initial guidance from town council to get this group moving correctly, so we don't have any special allocation for that. But the full review? Yep.
All right.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anita, also, for all the work. This is big. Is there anyone here for public comment?
Hi, Barbara Euphny, 23 Sherland Drive, Rutland. Uh, we'd like to present in the selectmen a petition that we have to repair and replace the sidewalks on Maple Avenue. We have over 70 signatures within five days, and I'm sure you have a couple of other questions.
So from the intersection of Main and Maple to Countryside?
No.
Does that say Countryside? Yep.
Oh, that's the wrong. It should be just to Rutland Heights Hospital.
Oh, you know what? The second, the second sheet says that.
Okay, okay.
Replaced with cement similar to Rutland Heights Hospital Road. Okay.
A little bit of history. About, about 30 years ago, they- A little bit of history, about, about 30 years ago, they did a mandate, they put tar over the cement. Now the tar has heaved, the water runs through the center and we have big potholes. The first day of school, one kid on the, by, by 44 Maple Ave, hit the pothole and went over the pole that's there as a, and he was old enough and smart enough that he let the bike go and he jumped down, which he was just lucky there wasn't any cars coming. We have several people that have fallen, they just haven't sued yet, but it's not a good situation.
What's the number on sidewalks, Gary, for linear foot?
Excuse me?
What's the sidewalk number for a linear foot? Do we know?
For replacement?
Uh, well, yeah, I don't, I don't think, yeah, I don't think this is repaired.
We have total costs for that and I don't have it with me because, Mr. Reed, I think you have the, your chart in your office as well. Because that is the first phase of the complete street process to be completed. Now they're running about, about 12 to 15 months behind. It was scheduled for this construction year, it just didn't happen. We are currently in Tier Three. And as, as the board knows and, and Bob knows, that it is a, a process of projects related to pedestrian and bicycle safety. The first project was from the intersection of Maple, is, I should say, from the intersection of Maple to the Heights. That number of what it would cost to do that was put together by CMRPC. The first questions that I raised through them is if they have to go through the pre-qualification process or can strictly go by low bid, because I'd rather use locals to do the work than, than to go outside and have to really go through the battle with prevailing. That actually is where we're, we're, we're standing now, to see what the bidding process is. And it can also reduce the number, because as, as I said, it wasn't a price that was put together by, by the town, it was put together by CMRPC. It entailed some classes that I had to attend. We couldn't go through the tier process until I did that, which I've done that. And, and so we're just waiting to see, and that is the first, the first project of the slate to be done in Towne, Rutland.
When you say they're 12 to 15 months behind, what does that mean for us? What is an estimated date?
I believe the, when they wanted to start it or start getting the prices to roll in was April of 18.
Right, but.
So I'm hoping for the spring construction season to begin that first project, which is the Maple, Maple Ave sidewalk.
And the funding is coming from where?
State, Complete Streets.
The state Complete Streets, as managed by.
State aid or local aid, excuse me?
As managed by CMRPC? Is it running through CMRPC?
No, runs through the town. We did the approval process, attended the classes, they were just, they assisted us in the process to get it started. And I, I believe a couple of years ago, maybe it hasn't been that long, I know certainly Margaret was involved. We had Chapter 90 funds that we had to use for their engineering and expertise to get that thing rolling.
What risks are we taking now with your departure? Margaret's gone, are, so are Complete Streets people who took classes and got certified?
The only person that took classes was myself.
Okay.
So where we go from there, I mean, the project that started, I wouldn't think we'd have to put other people through classes, but it's certainly a possibility.
And where is this sitting? What is this sitting, what department?
It's sitting, actually, to me, it's shovel-ready. We obviously have to go through the process of having a set of official plans drawn up, which obviously is an engineering cost. And, and Bob, I know you have that in your office and it's very, it's very high-priced stuff and that's why I wanted to research it, see if we can get it done for less. So where we're sitting actually is a set of plans to make that project become, in their eyes, shovel-ready.
Okay, so it's not shovel-ready, we need to design it.
Yeah, exactly.
And is there, what, I won't hold you to this, but design costs?
Design costs would probably have to come out of our Chapter 90 funds and not of the Complete Street project process.
And how much is that, do you think?
I don't know until I get an engineer down there to see, I mean, Chapter 90 is throwing money everywhere. Not only the small street, street projects we've done, but also the molten mill dam and the tip process, just for engineering and design.
But back to 12 to 15 months behind, they were supposed to start this spring. That puts them at possibly starting spring of 2019, but maybe not.
Hopefully. I'm not gonna say for sure, I'm gonna say hopefully. I will call Mr. Daniska tomorrow to see where we are. Dan Daniska is the representative from CMRPC I've been dealing with, that Margaret and I have been dealing with.
Okay. Okay, so it sounds like we have some groundwork done, no pun intended, yeah?
Well, part of that was to take that wall down and bring it down to street level, you know, where the fence is. Or you want it to stay up?
No.
So there is an engineering, there's an engineering process that has to be done. And part of it was to make it level and make it completely ADA accessible, which by state standard is five feet, as opposed to what it is, maybe some places you have two feet, you're lucky. So that's where the cost comes in, because there's gonna, there's most likely gonna be some takings. There's gonna be some easements for the additional width for the sidewalk. Maple Ave, we don't really worry about, because it's very wide as it is. So hopefully it won't, it won't involve too many things. I hope we don't have to move a bunch of poles. But it's a full, a full engineering process that has to be done.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess, yeah. Yeah. Follow-up?
Good evening, Anita Byer from Eight Mark Circle. And I just wanted to make a comment about the sidewalks on Maple Ave. They're horrendous, people are walking in the street, because they're falling. A friend of mine had shoulder surgery because of it. And also, I don't know if you've thought about the Fourth of July celebration. After the fireworks, I have to tell you, because I always walk home, it is mobbed, it is dark. People are walking with their kids on their shoulders and the sidewalks are awful. Cars everywhere, people everywhere, it's just a throng going down there. And someone is going to get hurt, seriously. It's, it's just amazing, the people that go down there. Go check this year and you'll see, it's, it's amazing. But that's all I have to say, they're just horrible.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the petition. That's a lot, a lot of signatures. Uh, is there anybody else here for public comment? So while he's making his way, we will, is, I'm trying to think of the best way to keep you all posted on what happens, especially through the winter when we probably won't see much action on it. Do you want us to work through Nancy and the Council on Aging? Or do you want us to just, you know, know that we'll be bringing this up multiple times?
It's not the Council on Aging.
No, I know it's not, but I'm trying to think of a good way to keep it moving forward and everybody on the same page.
Give a status report, that's fine. Give it to me.
Are your names highlighted on here?
Yeah.
All right.
Do we have, I'm sorry, do we have email addresses? Anita, do you have an email address? I'll just keep you in the loop when I contact.
I do.
Okay, all right, so maybe you can call and do that to me, too?
I can do it.
Or maybe you could give it to Abby too, tonight, like, or whenever, okay.
Hey, Tom.
Tom Rochella, 25 Maple Avenue. I'm here tonight representing Rutland Post 310 of the American Legion. As you know, we did the refurbishment of the World War One memorial this past spring. And we're gonna do a ceremony on November 11th at 1 o'clock to dedicate the memorial and, and also recognize the 100th year anniversary of World War One. So that's the, the, our tentative program is what I just gave you. I don't see too much changing on there, though we may tweak it a little bit for the date, but I'm here to get anybody that would like to come, please come to the ceremony. We'd like to get all of you there if we can. Cheryl has already agreed to speak for just a minute or so.
I'll be there.
And we can have anybody that would like to say anything, is welcome to speak while, while they're there. As you can see, we will have, our representative, Kim Ferguson, will be there. Ann Goby can't be there because she's committed to a parade and wear. But she's gonna try, you know, if she gets done with that quick enough, she's gonna try to get here, so.
I see that you have the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, they've already been, they know about it, it's.
Well, we've told, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
As far as I know, there's been talk back and forth trying to get some people to, to work on it. I'm gonna try to make sure we involve a lot of people as we're doing a couple of things here, so.
Thank you, this is lovely.
Tom, are we gonna put this on the cable? Maybe if you see, Mr. Matt or Mr. Crane, they can.
Oh, okay. Yes, it's supposed to be, the, the boards are supposed to have been done too, but I see tonight it hasn't been done yet, but. And I think Gary was gonna get, John Byer and spoke to you, I think, or, or, maybe. Phil Cannell, maybe.
Oh, he did, he's up in the other room.
So they were gonna try to get something brief about this on here, you're gonna work, yes.
Yeah, I think they, we gave them the email. And we do have it on the town website, but if we can add this, it's a little.
So is the landmark, landmark's not here tonight?
No.
Okay. All right, we'll have to try to get this down there to him, see if we can get it in the paper.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. But anyways, that's, so I wanted to give you a heads up so everybody can be there.
Do you need anything additional from us?
Cookies, cake, whatever for the refreshments afterwards.
For all the hard work.
We have an extra participant we sold today on cookies and coffee, so.
So now you gotta deliver.
He's over there, no, he's on the other end.
He'll come if there are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, am I jumping to you?
Anybody else have new business now?
No, public comment, sorry. I missed a few faces, you had your question answered, I know, sort of.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess you're up.
On the first item, I did speak with Bob Mercier today, who works with Alan Gould at MRI and the DPW director search is moving along. This week they're expected to go through the essay questions, which they give to candidates, whether it's a DPW search, town administrator's search, it's part of their process. And also will be doing phone interviews. They are expecting that they may have some names for the town within the next few weeks.
Any indication on how many? How many viable candidates?
They had about, a total of 17. One was from Texas, they said, the rest were from Massachusetts. And they're narrowing that down to a final four.
Great.
On the town administrator's search, the, um, I think you might all at least met with or talked to Bernie when he was here last week. Had his interviews with the selectmen and also department heads. Had his public forum in the evening. He'll be beginning in earnest the advertising process. I think he already has some people that he's worked with, either through his firm or from his teaching experience who may be interested in Rutland. And for those of you who weren't at the public forum, he mentioned that he thought he would probably have names to the selectmen to begin the interview process mid to late December. Which is sort of the schedule that I expected that they would have. Depending on how much notice the person has to give, then, you know, it could be into January before a replacement is, is working. Yeah, pass special town meeting and just go to the other two. Land lease, we received in one proposal for Marshfield that was from the Rutland Baseball. And I have to say, they, they really did an excellent job. It was a very impressive proposal that they submitted. And presently, I understand from Mr. Miller that their council is looking at the draft lease that was included in the RFP. And then he'll be getting back in touch with me after they've had a chance to confer with council. So we'll, you know, try to keep that process moving along. Commission on Disability? I know the town has accepted the statute that enables the community to set up a commission.
One of the things that Bob was able to work on with Dave when he first got here was the application for a grant that might help us do renovations over at Community Hall. One of the things that could help our application is getting this commission on disability actually up and running. We can call for and create that commission tonight. We need to choose between a number between five and 13 members. They prefer that the majority of those members be people of disability. At least one could be a relative of someone with a disability. I think one was also a board member. So we can go as big as we want or as small as we want, in between that five and 13. And I think getting that started will actually help us moving forward too, as we start talking more about any construction projects we have coming up, whether it's senior center or, you know, eventually the renovations we're hoping to do over at Community Hall and then at some point, someday, you know, probably past us, Community Hall, major renovation and addition.
So is there like a, do you have a proposed charge? That you're charging the, the commission, what their mission would be? Or are we going by something that's already drafted?
I think we would go by what the, what the MCOD would say, right? That's pretty well structured already. It was more that the.
You're following a model already that's already in existence?
Yeah.
Cool. So, so what are you looking for, Bobby? Motion to establish the commission and then it's, we just have to decide which. Okay, I'm trying to guess, so we're not creating something that's, that's not the, the standard in this, in this area for these commissions? Do we have a, a sample go-by for other commissions, other towns that are, that are doing these commission on the disability? I think this is kinda like the first we're hearing of it, we just wanna.
Sure.
Try to find out what's, what's working before we just go out and just create something. You know what I'm saying?
I do, I don't have the other towns' options for you. If that's something you want us to get, we certainly can. I don't know that there's a rush with this.
We can, we can get that.
Yeah, I mean, before we create a commission here, I mean, let's have some sort of a model in front of us that we wanna.
Yes, it's a good idea, we can get that from, like, try and get that from other towns and then use, using that, draft something up for Rutland.
I think it makes, I mean, I think it's a good thing to do, but I think, yeah, a little bit more information would be.
Just creating it on the, on the whim here, because we know very little about it.
So maybe, Abby, can you send the board the link to the MCOD regulation? So they can read that and get a sense for what this is.
Would you be okay to table it for upcoming meeting here?
Absolutely, oh, yeah, absolutely. And we can, um.
Keep creating these departments.
Anita.
I have a question, yes?
I was just gonna point out that we have had a committee in the past. And I, I don't know how long ago and I could look back and see actually whether there was a charge for them at the time.
What happened?
I think just stopped meeting.
Oh.
Do you know how many members there were or how many people?
I'll have to look back, but.
We have a tough time trying to fill the Historical Society Commission.
Right.
And so, I mean, you just go creating these boards that are gonna go unfilled and, and all you see is vacancy, vacancy. And there might be overlap, I don't know what the, what the charge is. We may have something. Just wanna kinda do it somewhat right.
No, I see your point, Jeff. On the other hand, when we create these new opportunities with a new area, there are people in town that take this as a, a very serious issue, especially with access to some of our buildings that we know is a little bit subpar in cases, so, everybody okay?
Yep.
I just asked, so we get some more information and table it back for.
Yep.
I didn't see an email on this at all or anything.
No, I think we added it on Thursday.
Okay.
Added it under the wire.
Yep.
Under the wire, that's why, all right.
Uh, just one other item before we get to town meeting, I know we have our roof bid opening this week. Gary's here, is that true?
Sorry, I got a couple things, if I could. The roof bid opening is the 25th?
Can you come up there so we can hear you?
Okay, that's okay.
Through the chair.
I have a hard time hearing. But you can hear me. Yes, the roof bid is opening on Thursday, the 25th. This Thursday, 10 AM. Okay. And I do have for you, I guess, well, I want it under department, department business, but anyway, it doesn't matter. Recently, Mr. Reed and I discussed the Sharnak Hill Mill Brook Bridge. As you know, every two years, MassDOT does an inspection of any bridge structures in town. So this one was done, it's dated December of 17 and did come through with a full picture report in May. Was sent to the office, was sent to Board of Selectmen. And I have recently talked to a Mr. Mahmoud Azizi, Bridge Inspection Department, regarding this bridge, because there are some concerned residents on Sharnak. And as, as you all know, that the, these concerned residents all, all certainly call and share their issues with the department, because as you know, the road was paved recently. And with the paving that we did on the road last year, it gives about a mile of new pavement. So obviously, traffic is gonna go faster. We did have a serious accident down there several years ago where a wood chip truck flipped. No serious injuries, but the department did respond and, and cleaned up the mess. So what? So what this resident is proposing, and is prepared to put a petition together, is that Sharnak Hill through to Intervale, in Route 68, is closed to truck traffic. That has to be a decision through the Police Department, and obviously through Mr. Reed and, and the board. And that would be based on studies, or just general complaints. The bridge report, Bob, that you and I went over, on Believe It or Not, the state rated that bridge structure in too high of a rating to have any repairs. Now, they did have a couple of items, general housekeeping items, if you will, the repairs that we at the department will do, and we're gathering the supplies to do that now. And that's mainly just a protective guardrail or fence structure on the abutments. But as far as spalling of concrete and any undermining and, and bad things with rebar and so on and so forth, they've rated that bridge structure at a six. And they will not even consider repairs or replacement until it gets to three or below. Because it is a twenty-foot structure, there is no weight limit on it, and that's based on the wheelbase of most trucks. We can, however, hire a firm out of our pockets to put a weight limit on it, if the board decides that that should become, in fact, cars only, and no commercial traffic. So I just wanted to give you that, 'cause I did get a report from a concerned resident who could not make the meeting tonight, but wanted me to share her concerns. And she sent me a pretty lengthy email about, about the roadway itself, and was hoping that the structure of the bridge would, would help her to, to win that battle. So that's where we are with the, the bridge, and Sharnak.
Any indication on how much commercial traffic you have?
That is, and always has been, a cut through for big trucks. They don't like coming up through the center of town and making that left on the Palmy. So they go that way. And also to reduce, um, um, their being visible to police, and everybody knows that. Basically, or mainly, it's the chip trucks and the car carriers. It's a better road than, some of Palma Gussit, anyway, and it keeps them out of the center of town. Everybody knows what the intersection of Main and Palma Gussit looks like during, during busy times, so.
Yeah, which is safer, making a left from Sharnak onto 122A, or right across to Dunkin' Donuts with an eighteen-wheeler?
A lot safer to go Sharnak than it is Main and Palma Gussit.
Now, we're cutting that off, and then...
But their thought, I mean, the residents of Sharnak, their thought is, as has been discussed before, actually, we had a detour up that way when we did the other bridge over the east, the, the branch of East River. And that was to send them to Route 68, all the way through town to Route 68 and beyond.
I was gonna say, they won't go all the way down 68 to the intersection with 122A, right? Because Tarnak and Palma Gussit are shorter.
Definitely, unless you were to close it to trucks.
Right.
Then they'd have to go to 68, or Palma Gussit, which, there's no intent there, has not been made mention, until that road is done over again to reduce the truck traffic. Because once you have a bicycle path and pedestrians and sidewalks, it's, it's gonna be kind of a, a different ballgame down there. So, just expressing or giving my, or the concerns of the residents to the board. But it still should have to be addressed with the Police Department and, and, and the board.
I'm sure the residents of Palma Gussit wouldn't appreciate the increased truck traffic either.
Certainly not, no.
That's right.
And they, and, and that showed when we had, a few years back, when we had Palma Gussit closed because of the rail trail tunnel. And they, they all went to Sharnak. Fortunately for us, they didn't close the bridge on Sharnak at the same time that we put the tunnel in on Palma Gussit, but...
When Tarnak was closed for the bridge, or Intervale was closed for the bridge replacement, where was truck traffic coming up?
The detour signs brought them to the center of town on Palma Gussit.
That's what I thought.
So Gary, when it comes to the bridge railing, which they rated a three, and I know, we, I'm looking at this, we got this in April, this report, what do you think is an ETA for completing repairs? You're saying that can be done in-house? Will it be done by winter?
Well, we're going to do it in-house. Since they've done their report, there was an accident on the bridge. It's very, it's very brittle. It's, it's simply like a three-inch I-beam structure with pipe, which anything can go through. So I talked to the, the guys in the shop who can't get their hands on a portable welder, and I can get them all the galvanize they want to put up the eight, eight-inch I-beam with beam rail, if we have the room widthwise on, on top of the, on top of the bridge railings, if you will, the concrete.
When was the accident?
Oh, it was, it was six, seven months ago. I don't have the accident report for me, I'm sorry.
Okay. Is it something that can be done before December, or no?
Yes.
Yes, really?
Yes, really.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
December, you're telling, you're taking guys out of the shop that are getting ready for snow, you're gonna fix a railing. What are we doing? We're not gonna be ready for snow?
We're ready for snow now, sir.
We got this report in April, Skip.
We're always ready for snow in October, sir. And you know that.
Can we have that report forwarded to Jeff and I? 'Cause I think if it came in in April, we weren't on the board yet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Through the chair. Gary, how come they're putting sidewalks on Intervale when it's already an existing road?
I'm not putting sidewalks.
Oh, I, sorry. I mean, I thought you said, we said the bridge is sidewalk.
No, 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 Palma Gussit, once the tip goes through, we'll have sidewalks on Intervale. No, Palma Gussit.
They don't have any now?
They don't have any now, no, no.
Can we be forwarded?
It's a different project. You might end up being, hopefully...
I thought you was putting new, now, saying...
You're trying to get me in trouble? You're trying to get me in trouble.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's all I have. We'll get it done. It's just an in-house, one, one, one of the guys has a portable welder at home, he's gonna bring it in and do it, so we don't have to pay the money out. We'll have to pay for the use of equipment and supplies, but...
And I have a question.
I'm on it.
This is a question for you. For the, if we wanted to change that weight, and put a weight limit on the bridge, that would be an in-house, like, the town would be responsible for that engineering cost? Have the engineering done to prove that?
Yes, because the state told me that there is no weight rating on that, because it's a short span, it's twenty feet, which just, which just makes the minimum for a bridge in the state.
And by doing, if we did put the weight limit on, then effectively, it would most likely become closed to truck traffic, correct?
No, I understand what you're saying, but because of the wheelbase for a truck, I really don't think it would affect truck traffic at all. So I think it'd just have to be a low, local jurisdictional type of thing, where you would have to go through the police chief and close it.
That's what I was wondering if, which would, would hold more weight if we decided to go that route?
Right. I mean, anybody that sees the, the trailer trucks, I mean, between the, the wheels of the horse to the wheels of the back of the trailers, forty feet, and you got a twenty-foot span, so they're all clear by the time that heavyweight load gets over it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay? Any more questions?
I do, but I don't know.
Boy, you're smiling, so it must be a goodie.
What?
Nothing.
They'll pay for this. Have we done anything, or anybody talk to you about getting a container in for all this electronics that we're gonna be throwing away, so the town can benefit by it?
Did anybody talk to you about it?
What?
No.
Yeah. Nobody has.
No.
Okay.
Well, I think Gary is looking into, what, a firm that, if you're talking about the computers that we had looked at?
Yeah, I'm talking about computers.
Yeah, and you were looking into a firm that...
I, I am, yeah, yeah.
May pay us to take it away.
We did, we did have a firm in 2010. P, PT Limited, out of Billrica. And what we did back then is, and we, we published a list that we sent out to residents, and they were told what they could bring. The firm supplied a roll-off, and, and we loaded from our storage containers into their roll-off. They picked them up and took them to their shop, and I believe it's Billrica, or Bellingham, one or the other, I don't remember. Actually, I had Nancy looking up that stuff, too. Disassembled, salvaged the precious metals, and sent us a check. Don't remember how much money it was, Bob, I'd have to look at it, but they are still in business, 'cause within the last week or so, I did call them, but I have not been approached, 'cause it, it was a problem even in 2010, because I tried to do it after that, to have a recycling program for electronics in the town because of the transfer station, a recycle station in, in West Boylston.
I guess anything is better than paying for it.
Well, folks have to pay to get rid of this stuff, as you know, up there, and, and it was free here, and we got money back. I just don't remember how much it was.
Anita had scheduled a visit with Paul, our IT person, and we've got computers here in this building, top of Community Hall, and once we dispose of those, we can have our cleanup day.
Yeah, I think...
And Gary can back the truck up, and we'll just...
Yeah, just draw them in. I think the only thing they didn't take was TVs. I think that's the only thing we couldn't give them, was TVs. The rest were hard drives and...
But just monitors?
I think they did, and I couldn't understand why they didn't take the, the TVs, but anyway, I'd have to... I did, I, I do have a call-in to them, they just haven't called me back, but they still are in business.
So it's...
I guess I misunderstood what the question was, Skip, so I apologize, I've been looking into it.
Find out if it's gonna get done, so we can start cleaning.
Before December, I don't know, I can't answer that, but...
I mean, the town pays tax dollars to be members up in West Boylston. And there's a reason why they charge minimal amounts for the things that...
But they're getting money from them computers. That irritates me. The town pays money, then if you bring your own over there, you have to pay to get rid of it, too. Where if we have our own, residents are getting a little bit for the money that we're paying them over there already.
What do you think this company does with all of the stuff that they don't need anymore?
I have no clue. I would imagine they can't take care of it.
They're shipping it overseas.
Shipping overseas and carting it out.
Yeah, dump it in the oceans.
I don't think so.
Town's getting money back, right?
So that makes it all worth it?
The citizens of the town would be getting money back.
The town's getting money back. Who knows where it's going? And we all know where the, if you dump it in West Boylston, where, what are they doing with the stuff?
Well, so that was a huge partnership with the state and all of the communities that are members, and we all pay a small amount each year in tax dollars to be members. It's mostly funded by that, by state grants, and then it's essentially manned by volunteers. And so when you're bringing a carload of whatever over there, they're doing all the sorting, and then they are disposing of it. For the most part, everything that you bring there costs money to dispose of, whether it's the styrofoams, the electronics in particular, the electronics, there's an enormous amount of heavy metals. They're trying to maybe extract the gold, absolutely, no question, you know, every little bit, you watch Gold Rush, whatever that show is. But when it comes to the heavy metals and what's left over, and the cathode ray tubes in the TVs, that's when it becomes hazardous waste. And so we rely on Watch Use at Earth Day, kinda knowing what it's doing, doing the separation appropriately, training its workers, and then they, they dispose of it one by one. It's why everything gets to, I don't know if you've been up there yet, but you have to do sort of a tour around and drop your things off in, in each particular location, whether it's tires, or... Yeah, and, you know...
You were just saying that they dump it in the ocean, but this company might, or what have you, but who knows what West Boylston does? Where does their supplies go after they get them?
They work pretty hard, I think, and, and there's a meeting, there's a meeting in a month that I go to as the rep, so I can certainly find out for you, but they work really hard to ensure that the, that the supply and the supply chain for the products that they're getting are going to the right places to be as recyclable as they can be without affecting the end, you know? And, and obviously, the goal of opening that site to begin with was to get rid of what we continue to see, and it's all over town, which is people dumping stuff, right? To make it easy enough, I mean, I get that it's not right in your backyard every day, it's down the street in West Boylston, and to make it cheap enough, five or ten dollars, you know, the hope is to keep it out of the, out of the waterways.
But I understand what Skip's saying, that if this company comes in with dumpsters, and the townspeople don't have to pay to dispose of it, and the town gets money back, it's a win-win, depending on what they do with the, the stuff.
I think, I think right now, we're only talking about town computers.
No, we would open it up to everybody in town. That's the only way it's fair.
Skip is not talking about town computers.
Oh, okay.
Apparently Skip is not talking about town computers.
That's right.
Talking about all computers. They're talking everybody, the town and everybody.
Last time it was town-wide, we sent the notice out, it was town-wide, for Rutland residents only. Last time we did it.
I would want to hear about, about the company's disposal practices, absolutely.
I'll get you whatever information I can, as long as you want me to proceed and, and find that stuff out.
Maybe they're gonna resell like they do over there now, the recycle center. They don't give the stuff away anymore. They're gonna, they resell it back to the people.
We're getting off topic. Skip and I can have this conversation later.
I don't think either way, we're talking very much money, so...
I agree. Probably not a lot of money, but I guess the big thing, the selling point, was it was some money, and the residents of Rutland didn't have to pay to dispose. And I believe a couple of weeks ago, there was a, a sign at the church parking lot right up here, for an electronic recycling, recycling day, and on that sign, it told you how much, how much you had to pay to get rid of.
But I think, I mean, if it's okay with the board, maybe a, a town recycling day might be a separate project, a separate issue, from trying to get rid of the computers that we've got here, so we can proceed with, you know, cleaning up and making space, depending on what our schedule is gonna be for moves that we've been talking about.
Okay. Would we know, or Sheila, would you know that if it's town-related, if the town equipment is allowed to be taken to West Boylston free of charge, or does a town have to pay?
So I have a meeting in, I think, two weeks with the Earth Day Board. We, all the towns will be there, and I will ask that question, and I will sit here right now and volunteer my trailer to take all the computers myself to the recycling center in West Boylston.
Well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, I mean...
I'm volunteering.
Our, yeah, I know, but our trucks are a lot bigger than your trailer.
True, but there's not that many computers. There's a lot of computers, but I'll make two trips if I have to.
Well, alls you've seen, there is a lot of computers, but alls you're seeing is what's up in town buildings. You're not seeing what's in my storage containers.
I don't doubt it.
We never stopped collecting. Never stopped. We just don't advertise. If somebody has something to get rid of and calls, we put it in our storage trailer. If we find things on the side of the road, which we do quite often, we can't just throw it in the dumpster, we put it in our storage trailer.
Okay. It's not clear to me why we wouldn't have been sending people over to the taxpayer-funded Watch Use at Earth Day Recycling Center and taking them. It's one thing to find things on the side of the road, but that's neither here nor there. So I, I guess we're gonna move forward?
I will find out the information you're looking for, and we'll decide then if we're gonna move forward.
Great.
Okay. All right.
Anything else?
No.
Good?
Thank you.
Anybody have anything?
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Skip?
Keep up the good work, sir.
Thanks, Gary.
No, I'll let it go, I got other things, but, well, I can talk to Gary on the side.
Okay, good.
I'm gonna leave, if you don't need me, I'm Skip, I'm gonna...
Yeah, you can go, as far as I'm concerned, but I'm not the chair.
I have to go get ready, okay. Get ready for us, no?
Would you like to make a motion to adjourn? Anyone? Anyone? Motion to adjourn?
Hold on.
Nope.
I thought we'd zip through this really quick.
Oh, my God. What do you mean? All right, off we go, sorry, so we're not adjourning?
Well, it's a...
It's only...
You were almost out of here.
I know. It's only 10 pages.
This is a first cut between the first couple of pages, which I've, we've got as a draft here. I didn't include the marijuana bylaws and type all that out, that's attached, as well as the stormwater bylaw, which is 10 pages. And then lastly, we can talk about the articles that have been submitted from DPW. A few of them are on the draft, I've incorporated those, and we can go over that. And it'll be the board's pleasure what additional ones you want to include, as well as put in the order and so forth. There is no order here. I just went through the file and just was hopeful that this was comprehensive. I know in looking at your format here, in the past, you, after the article number, you've put the sponsor, so that can be added in later for the final warrant. And then also, there's, there looked to be in bold the statute, what the vote would be in the statute that determined the vote, so all that can get plugged in after I, after I review this with council. We'll get back to the, the format that Rutland has. Like I said, this is just for the board to look at. It's a first cut largely so you'll be aware not only of what's been submitted, but can think about what you want included. I mean, I'm not assuming that all of this is gonna be included on the special town meeting warrant. The first one is to make the budget adjustment. It's my understanding, the plan is that the budget's gonna be adjusted per what was cut from the budget at the annual town meeting. There may be some other adjustments that you want to add on top of that, to supplement budgets. So I don't have a final number for that yet. And you should all know also that we don't have a free cash figure yet. I understand from the town accountant that he got the last piece of information that he needed over the weekend. He has submitted everything to the Department of Revenue today. He's also contacted the Department of Revenue to fast-track this. I'm hoping, and Dan hasn't said this, he's cautious because he's done this often enough, but I'm hoping that we'll have a number by the end of the week. So that's the supplemental finance article. Article two needs to be changed. I just was using the format that's generally done by the capital budget committee right now, and I met with the capital budget committee last Thursday. It seems the only item that we have suggested to this point that would be a capital item for the special town meeting is the holder from, depending on what the board does with the rest of the list. And that number needs to be changed with, Gary had submitted 69.5, so we can change that. But right now, that appears to be the only capital item, or at least the only capital item on this draft. Article three is the late bill that's come in from the Upper Blackstone. We also have an MWRA bill to pay. And I've discussed with the town accountant what articles to make the transfer. We may add another article besides Article 15 from the meeting of May 6. And you can ignore what's in bold with subsequent emails I've had from the town accountant. I think other late bills that have come in, he said can be paid without going to town meeting. That would be this one from Water Enterprise and also that RDIC one. Then on to the articles, $500 for finding and preserving town meeting warrants in minutes from the town clerk. And then these are the articles that I understand have been done in the spring by the town, putting money into OPEB capital improvement and capital stabilization, I should say, and stabilization. So those are the next three articles. $5,000 to upgrade the town's website, also submitted by the town clerk. I received a request from the library director for $879 for a fax scanner printer. $15,000 to fund legal and land court fees necessary for, to move forward on 17 parcels in tax title. Received a request from the fire chief, custodian of the public safety building, for money for a heat and AC unit for the, the public safety building. These are some of the articles, this is one of the items that was on the DPW list. The board has had some discussion about this. $9,700 to replace the fencing at the Memorial Playground. The next several articles, and I didn't type them all out yet, are the road acceptance articles. And I wanted to mention that the planning board is gonna be issuing their report. They met last Wednesday, they're approving all of the petitions that came in. So this includes all the, all the ones that the planning board has approved. In order to be able to meet your schedule, we've sent out notices. And I just wanted to mention Abby and Laura, who did a lot of work at the last minute last Thursday in order to be able to get those notices done. They were delivered by the police department, so I wanted to thank the chief also, hand-delivering those Friday, so we would be able to get under the deadline, and you wouldn't be looking at road acceptance hearing after you've posted the warrant. So it's scheduled for the 29th.
Thank you.
Next are the marijuana articles, and I didn't type all those out either. You've got those in a, in a form from, that's also attached from the planning board. Six, six of those related to marijuana. Also attached is a stormwater bylaw that came in from DPW, which I think Weston and Sampson is saying is imperative that that go forward at the special.
Because it's already stated that we will do that for the NOI.
The next two articles have to do with pilot payments from the solar project. The RFP was issued. The pilot payments or the tax agreements would come under the Board of Selectment. One of these parcels is under the RDIC, they would negotiate the lease. I understand you always, you already have approval to negotiate the lease, but the pilot payments would come under the Board of Selectment, and that has to go to town meeting according to council. So these are separate articles for both of those parcels. One is the public land under the Selectment, and the other is the land under the RDIC. The next item, 27, is also on the DPW list for $4,600 for closed circuit monitoring at the water treatment facility. And I think lastly is our lease, authorizing the Board of Selectment to lease property approximately eight acres for the purpose of a soccer field. As you can tell from the articles, this is far from final form. I mean, I'll need to go over this with council, but these are all just placeholders at this point. And you have lastly, the full list from DPW, articles related to highway, the Water Enterprise account, and also the Sewer Enterprise account. And I've noted which ones from that final list are already on the warrant. That would be the, the Holder, closed-circuit TV, Memorial Street Playground Fence, Stormwater Bylaw, and the late bill from DCR and MWRA.
Couple of questions, if you don't mind. So we voted a few meetings back to remove on the Article 12 Memorial Playground fencing. So we authorized the removal of it several meetings ago because of the immediate safety concerns. Is it mandated that we put another fence up? I know we kind of talked a little bit about the pros and cons of that particular playground, whether a fence is detrimental.
That's a good question, I don't recall.
No, it's not mandated, that's through the, if you will, the playground handbook. If it does not have a fence, it doesn't need one. If there is a fence or the fences in disrepair, it must be constructed to their standards, which is heavier gauge cyclone, heavier gauge piping, bottom railings, and so on and so forth.
So, I mean, what's your recommendation on the fence?
My recommendation, as I stated before, on Jeff's, because of its proximity to a traveled way, I thought it should have a fence.
You should fence it back in. Okay?
The whole thing or just that one side?
If you put up one side...
It's a wall.
It's all gonna be constructed. I mean, my concern is a toddler running out here, because there's nothing to stop him or her and just running into traffic. That's very heavily traveled roadway right there in that special Memorial.
We had fence on, on towns, on the safety building side too before. And all over, all over.
All the way around, all the way up at that playground, yeah. We have four sides, yeah.
Your recommendation is all four squares there, that's what your recommendation is.
Did the police not submit anything?
The chief did. One was to fund the sergeant's contract. And, but I thought that's what I meant by supplemental.
Okay. Oh, you're gonna try to...
And the other was to pay off the lease for one of the cruisers. But in speaking with the chief, and I'll double-check with him, I think he would be happy to get back on to just a regular schedule and have that in the operating budget rather than leasing it. And in fact, he's given me the numbers, and it actually cost the town more money to lease it than if you would just pay for it. But I think that's really his goal, is to get back on to a regular, one cruiser a week, get one cruiser a year schedule.
The lease thing is, we didn't have the money to buy it outright.
Yes, I understand.
So obviously, we have appropriated some of the money, spending the, the free cash.
This is far from final form.
So we'll get another peek at that.
This is just a snapshot, yeah.
In case we have any eye-openers.
As you know, you have your special meeting next week, next Monday, to go over it. And that, that's when it would have to be in final form, or we could, I can finish that off before it, because it will have to be posted by the end of next week. Certainly, I've invited the, the, the planning board to come into that meeting, both for the road acceptance articles and for the marijuana articles. I mentioned Finance Committee. I've, I've emailed this packet to Tom, so that they'll have this information for their meeting Thursday.
Do you guys have the financial management policies? Was I getting to you when you started? Forward that to everybody.
Sure.
So, just so you know, the financial management policies will be related to Article, oh, yeah, six, seven, five, six, seven, where we sort of took the first step of saying, if we, you know, if we have enough free cash to be able to do this, we're gonna save some of it into three separate accounts with a particular goal percentage in mind. So there is a Finance Committee meeting on Thursday. At that point, we've typically gone in with a little bit more framework, but, you know, in the absence of having a free cash number, things are still up in the air. Obviously, the one thing that was a difficult subject at May Town Meeting was Article One and what we had to do on the floor. And so I think the goal is to not only recover everything that had to be pulled that night, but also to plug in some of the things that Bob was mentioning that have now become in front of us, whether it's the sergeant's contract or the additional money is needed for the searches, the executive searches, things like that. That will probably be a big topic of conversation on, on Thursday night. And then on Tuesday night tomorrow, for everybody here in this building, in the large meeting room, is the first and only, I think, no, first of two?
The only one.
The only one, might be the only one.
I think it's the only one.
Public information session regarding all of the marijuana bylaws that we're going to be seeing for zoning at the special town meeting.
And educate me a little bit. So on the, on the six articles for the marijuana?
Right.
Right? The board has the control of what's gonna be put before the FIBULUS?
True.
You decide what goes on the warrant.
Right, so what's the deadline, or at what point do we have any protocol on all these? Are we obligated to put forward all five or six articles related to marijuana? I, I mean, I understand that, number one, Article One, the prohibition is gonna be first. And if that gets shut down, then you go to the, to the other ones, but...
Yeah.
Is there any discussion, protocol or otherwise, of deciding what we're going to put forward on this?
So if that's a conversation you want to have, we can have it next Monday, because we won't be placing anything tonight. I'd say we should definitely place it after the information session happens tomorrow, because we don't know what kind of feedback they're going to get. They've obviously gotten an enormous amount of assistance at this point now from legal. This, this is what we're looking at, has gone through legal. And I, to be perfectly honest, Jeff, it's kind of a building process. It's what you say, you know? Depending on the results of the first one, we do need to place all of these as just in cases, in my mind.
But if it's not in there, then it's not an option.
Exactly, so if you look at number four, which is the local options tax, there is no reason to leave that off.
Right.
And we can always take no action on it if that's, if that's where we end up going.
I do, I do agree absolutely, after the, the open session with the FIBULUS.
And I think my understanding was that they tried, the bylaw, the planning board bylaw tried to offer options for the town to have as much control as the town legally can have going through the list. So if number one passes, that's the prohibition, so then there would be no subsequent, I would think.
But if, but if you see all...
But if number, right, but if number two, if number one fails, and we go on to number two, and then we can go...
Yes, I think, to your point, I think the order in which these are from the planning board is the order that they would like to see them on the warrant. There's a strategy behind this. For example, Article Five, the general bylaw for the prohibition, it's much more likely, you know, and that won't take a two-thirds vote, as the zoning prohibition does, it's more likely that the AG's office will look on that favorably if you've gone through the previous articles.
Well, you might have an agenda too, or... Well, I'd like to hear what, what the open session has to say. I think, I think that if we have all these different options in here, then you're going to get... I guess your special interests, they're gonna be pushing for one or the other. I'd like to see, I'd like to see what the, the general consensus is at the, at the upcoming meeting, and then maybe avoid us a, a big headache or an all-nighter.
Yeah, I agree. So just so you know, the way you read these, and I think that, you know, we can have some time if they want to see this, certainly tomorrow night, they'll, these will be available. The first one is a, is the highest level, it's a zoning bylaw, non-medical marijuana use prohibition. That will require a two-thirds vote. If you go off of that one, and if you were to just jump to make the assumption that it in fact failed, so a prohibition failed, you would then go to establishing zoning so that you would have some local control, right, over what happens. That goes along with number three. Then you get to number four, there's the local options tax. Article Five is your safety net. That is the general bylaw, non-medical marijuana prohibition. Our understanding from the legal conversation that we had was that the AG's office considers the zoning bylaw to have the highest sort of effect, efficacy, I guess is the right word. The general bylaw would not require a two-thirds. So, would it? No, it would be a, it would be a simple majority. So in the absence of any type of consistency from the voting community that night, this would be sort of your last gasp of, okay, we've done a prohibition, but only on a general bylaw level.
In theory, we could, we, I mean me, we push to promote Article One, Article Four, and Article Five only, and the other ones get scratched.
So bear in mind, you know, once we place these, it's no longer our meeting. And I think when it comes to this, what we can probably do, and we haven't done it in the past, we've, we've talked about it many times, the understanding was always that in placing an article, you were getting the Board of Selectmen's approval for it. And you didn't know necessarily whether it was a, you know, five to, five to O or three to two, whatever, vote. In this case, we can do a, a Board of Selectmen vote.
Yeah.
You know, if people want to hear us speak on it, that's fine, there can be one side, two sides.
At what meeting? The first meeting after the...
At the special town meeting, after, yeah.
So we're not gonna have an opportunity to have that discussion until...
No, we will. So next Monday, when we place these articles, we can have the discussion, and we'll take the vote. And then, once that vote is taken, Abby, I guess, this will be maybe our first time placing the Board of Selectmen's vote onto the actual warrant that night, so people can see how the board voted in support of placing the article. We've never had, added that, and we can, we've talked about it.
I think that would be fair, and then, uh...
Okay.
I think that, I think that would be fair.
I think the one, and I don't know how much they're gonna go over this tomorrow night, we'll have to see. The one that got added at the last minute is, is a bit different, and that's a public consumption bylaw. It does not go along with, you know, what people have been talking about since the 2016 vote, which is recreational sales. And so we're gonna be spending a lot of time on marijuana if we end up putting this one in here. We obviously already have, I, what were we talking about? The Board of Health has prohibited smoking in public places and public buildings. This would be included in that. This bylaw, as it's written, goes farther than that. It is very specific to marijuana. So I, you know, that's the one where it's a little bit like one of these things, it's not like the other. The rest of them are in regards to sales.
Yeah, my understanding on that article is that the bylaw subcommittee did look at it. I'm not sure they voted in favor of it, I can double-check on that.
Yeah.
They did vote to forward it to the Selectmen, but it sounds like they had a number of questions about it and how it would be implemented.
Yeah. I don't know that this has gone to the chief either.
I don't either. I'll make sure he gets it.
Would that be something that, depending on how the vote on the zoning general bylaws could then be added? No, if we didn't place it, if we didn't place this one for fall town meeting, but then, say, it passed, say, for zoning bylaw or general bylaw passes, it's not prohibited, could these then be placed for the annual town meeting?
You can, absolutely, anything can wait, or it can be placed. Every other zoning bylaw that they've been working on has been very specific to establishments, whereas this public consumption is completely different than that.
Right, I just feel like this is like, oh, we haven't been focusing on this, let's put something together, because they're, a majority of their effort has been with the, with the establishments, so...
I gotta be honest, I think this one really opens a can of worms, because you obviously have federal government's take on this, you have state government's take on this, you have the local authorities' take on...
Well, this is a prohibition.
It is, so...
So it's okay. Ready, Skip?
It should be fun.
It should be.
Okay.
It'll be an hour later.
Gary, where did stormwater come from? Where did, where did this bylaw come from, this stormwater? this stormwater?
That came from Weston and Sampson. Now, I met with the bylaw committee a year ago, Marilyn, Norm, everybody else on the committee. And what we did was me versus Spencer's, and then tried to have the one that we gave to Mr. Cranston, Paul Cranston, several years ago. They went through it, and it took a long time. Nobody really approved it. Margaret did have it on, and we were supposed to go over it at the annual, but it just didn't happen. So, Weston and Sampson sent me that one, and I forwarded that version to the bylaw committee. And Marilyn got back to me and approved that, and said she is good with it as it reads. And I, they still probably, as a board, have to vote on that, but part of the notice of intent, that process is that we have to have, step one, is obviously the NOI, but part of that is to have a stormwater bylaw.
Yep.
So, to answer, I'm sorry, to answer your question in short, it came from Weston and Sampson.
Gary, do you know if any other towns have adopted this same bylaw?
That same one, I do not. I can find that out, but I do not know that right now.
So, the chair of the committee looked at it, but I don't think the entire committee has.
I sent it to Norman, and he forwarded to, and also to you, and he forwarded to Marilyn. She, and she responded. I don't know if the rest of the committee looked at it.
Is this primarily to, because of the new EPA regulations, or to avail us to available grants?
This is absolutely because of the new, the new stormwater. Yeah. That's the first step. Obviously, we have a lot to go over with how much it's going to cost the town, and that's why I had Mr. Civi in here to talk to you guys in the town about that. There's a lot more to go through, but we still have to move forward on it.
It's at $180,000.
This is the environmental version of OPEB.
There you go. There you go.
So, Gary, I'm trying to remember. A year ago, we worked with Jeff Blake at KP Law, and he attached a copy of the stormwater bylaw, Article 27, with comments and revisions. And where did we go from there?
It was pulled off, Sheila, and I did...
And I can't remember why.
And I can't either. Obviously, it was through, it was through Margaret's office at the time. There had to be a reason. I just don't know what it is. I don't know if it was something as simply as, did you say that legal reviewed that a year ago?
Well, yeah, and then later that month, Lauren got a hold of it. It says, they had asked Jeff to pause his review until there was further clarification from the bylaw subcommittee. That was received. It was requested that he continue review based on compliance with the existing Clean Water Act and the new MS4, excuse me, rather than the new MS4 permit. And then, it looks like, I don't know. I'm trying to remember why we dropped it. Peter remembers?
It all had to do with the applicability of law at the time.
Because MS4 was...
The work the bylaw review subcommittee did was really based upon pre-MS4, and Margaret was very concerned about applicability when MS4 actually took effect. And so, it got stuck in that limbo between the two, and so, at the end, it was dropped rather than continued work on it.
Okay.
Now, I don't think the intent was to completely drop it, but that's neither here nor there. It was completely dropped.
It was completely dropped. Okay.
You know, there's a regional consortium set up. It's one of these things where the MS4 requirements are the same from town to town, and there are several consortiums across the state. I believe Weston and Sampson is the consultant that is at least working with this Worcester area consortium. I'm just wondering, if nobody else has adopted this, how imperative it is to, I mean, I would think Weston and Sampson is working on a standardized bylaw that will meet all the requirements and that the towns can adopt without a lot of extra legal work and so forth. But I'm just wondering, if nobody else has adopted it at this point, how imperative it is that it go forward at the special.
Sorry, I ask, is it mandated because of the, is EPA mandating that we create a bylaw?
Yes. But I can check with the coalition, I guess, the coalition tomorrow, see if West, I don't think Weston and Sampson has worked with Central Mass Coalition, but I can certainly check with them, because we are member.
I thought they had Weston and Sampson as the consulting engineer for the consortium.
You know what, Bob, I really don't remember if they are, if they are not, because I've never talked to them about the coalition.
So, the bylaw from a year ago is different from the bylaw you gave us?
Yes.
Yes. I haven't seen this, but I would bet this.
Okay.
Has legal seen this one from Weston and Sampson?
They have not seen that one from Weston and Sampson, only because I really haven't, because I'm not sure if the bylaw committee took a vote. Obviously, you haven't seen it, so I don't know if the bylaw committee is ready to take a vote on what I sent them.
Is the urgency date specific? Did we need to do this by a particular date in order to keep going?
We had to tell them by October 1st, when the NOI was due.
Right, I remember that.
That was going on the warrant, special town meeting. And that was a grace period, if you will, because they know we're working on it to get it on special.
Right, but what if our special town meeting was in January?
Good question, Sheila. I can answer it.
Okay. Okay, we have some questions to answer.
Beat a dead horse question here. On the, this add-on, the public consumption in there, there's a fine, $300 for each fence. Where's that number come from?
I can answer that question directly. The entire bylaw, other than the penalty section, the number's the same. The entire bylaw came from Amherst. It was modeled completely after that, which was accepted by the AG and made it therefore an attractive public consumption prohibition bylaw.
So, did it come from Amherst or modeled after Amherst? Is it word for word?
The section about penalty is not word for word, because they wrote things that talk about being able to punish in any manner inequity or law. And I changed it to just a civil disposition. That's the only change.
How about arrest authority? Is that, are any of the, because I know, you know, bylaws, a certain bylaw that can afford your local officer arrest authority on certain violations. Do you have any samples that include that?
No, I have not seen that. I've only seen them be civil offenses, not criminal offenses by, in the bylaw.
So, Peter, you wrote this, you found this?
Yes.
As an addendum to all of the establishment bylaws that were, we knew were coming up because of the moratorium?
Yes, and I'd mentioned it any number of times, any number of people that it was coming along, that because, that the intent was always having along with a packet of marijuana bylaws. To regulate marijuana, have the public prohibition, just like alcohol. That's the reasoning behind it.
Right. And so, the open, that's my point. So, the open container arrest authority for an officer is through a town bylaw or an ordinance. So, if you have a town that didn't adopt one, then you couldn't be arrested for being drunk in public.
Right.
So, that's, that's the big thing I'm noticing that's different. There's no language or wording or anything like that.
There was no wording to allow arrest in the Amherst bylaw.
Yeah, we can talk about that on Monday, right?
This is going to be fun, isn't it?
Oh, that's a word, sure.
Not for me, yeah.
Did the police chief see this?
No, he has not. That was my oversight.
I'll get it to him. I've sent it to council also.
Do you know of any community that has amended their public drinking bylaw to simply include other substances? Because why do we need to...
A fast search did not show one that I could take quickly. And I have not found one that I could model.
Okay.
Can we pull up our open container bylaw or ordinance? That might be better in line.
Yeah, well, we're not going to do it tonight, but that's, we're going to be doing that, Peter, just FYI.
Sure.
And as you know, this is, this would be the second general. We've got the one general, that's sort of our safety net general, and this would be the second general if it goes on.
Actually, the third, because the first one is the sales tax. That's not zoning, that's...
Well, that's fair. All right, the sales tax. Okay.
Make a few work on this, Peter.
Anything else, Bob?
Gives us a lot to...
No, not really.
Wide enough to think about it. Well, I mean...
If the board has any...
Oh, and by the way, I have to tell you, there's, it's either going to be shockingly convoluted motion, or we need another article. Because zoning, there are a lot of little zoning bylaw changes that need to go in as well, or we have made an impracticable bylaw.
You have a pub, there's a, I keep saying you, but you're not even on this subcommittee.
I know.
They have a, an information session tomorrow night.
Yes, and I'm sure we'll, I'm hoping someone will talk about it. Not being on the committee, I don't have agenda authority.
Okay.
So, tomorrow will be interesting, Monday, next Monday will be interesting.
Yeah.
So, any questions at all that you might have, any follow-up you want, just let me know.
Well, you got the numbers in this, in case we have sticker shock.
No, is it, it's just eight a little after. Is it okay if we do one thing, just because we have Gary here? You guys should know about the holder. And Gary, do you want to take just two minutes to explain what that piece of equipment is and how old the one we have is?
Sure. The current one we have is a 1998. It's called an MT, and it was not only purchased for a field mower, but was also purchased for, with a V plow and a snowblower. That's our main piece of equipment for all sidewalks that were required to do by the town and the school district. Currently, there's not much holding the center of that MT together. And if, it would cost minimally, right now, $10,000 just to get that portion of the machine repaired. And we would have to do that before winter sets in. The new machine, actually, the used machine, the first price I put in was for a new machine. The used that comes out of Canada, two to three years old max, with a warranty for $69.5. And that's what we need. We have to, it's a staple. It's a staple for our sidewalks, and we don't use it for, obviously, a lot of field cutting, but we did use it for over-the-rail cutting prior to purchasing the John New tractor. But the biggest part of it is sidewalks and parking lots.
So, you want a motion to place that on the warrant tonight? I'd be glad to make that motion.
Well, I wanted to make sure that the rest of the board was aware. So, we've been waiting for this for years. We've been putting it off, putting it off. I mean, I don't know, Gary, that we have the money for the new one, but I think the question is, they've held this one together with, I think literally, coat hangers at this point is holding a piece of it when I last saw it. And I don't want to put good money after bad if we think a used holder isn't going to get us the longevity that a new one is. Again, I don't know that the money's there, that we, I don't think we have much of a choice.
Right. The one we have is 20 years old, like, it's 20 years old, and used constantly and went to die constantly.
Is it, is it Pete that usually?
Excuse me?
Who is it that usually drives it? Is it Pete?
Eric.
It's Eric.
My buddy Eric.
So, Eric was telling me this summer, when I was down there, that he's the only one who drives it, because he sort of knows how to baby it, and he knows that you can't drive it too fast. And some of the other people might not be as patient with it, and it's just, it's on its last legs. If it had legs, it would be literally, so...
Sounds reasonable.
Skip, do you have a strong feeling? No, hypothetically, again, we don't know where free cash is.
I haven't. I would rather see us not get something we need. I'd rather see us get this than circumvent something else.
Okay.
So, this is a priority for you?
Yes, it is.
I think, yeah.
The people's going to complain about their kids not being able to walk on the sidewalk if we don't have it. Really.
It's a versatile piece of machinery, because it also comes with a set of rooms. It comes with a plow. It comes with a V plow, a slow, over-the-rail mower. It's going to be used year-round if it's well, if it's in good enough shape to be used year-round. There's always something for it to do.
Are we going to see relief this winter with the change to mass highway being required to plow their own sidewalks? Are they going to do 122A sidewalks?
I have not heard that they are going to do 122A.
Oh, yeah, it was in the news a couple weeks ago.
From what I, the person I've talked to who's in charge of the section, it doesn't have any additional help, and certainly doesn't have the equipment to do the sidewalk.
All right, then.
Perfect, Sheila. Update that thing, change the $50 fine to $300, and add to what marijuana, comma, after alcohol.
So, do you have a strong feeling about the used? I mean, it's a huge price difference. We're going to be talking about this Thursday, I would think, ad nauseam, so...
What's the difference between used as the $69.5 and new is...
$147.
$147?
Yeah, I think it's off the list, actually. It was so high.
That would be capital, and you're saying this is...
This is capital, too.
Yeah.
All right. Well, obviously, the difference is, the difference is that we don't know what kind of headaches it's coming with the used piece of equipment. So, anybody would rather, for the type of work that it's used for, to purchase the full set of warranties and the opportunity to buy additional extended warranties if need be. So, we don't, we can do the history search, we can, we can talk, certainly talk to the salespeople, we can talk to the Canucks, and we can see what, I meant Canadians, and see what, see what they know of it. But other than that, it could be somebody else's headache.
Yeah.
Well, we're going to have, hopefully, more knowledge this week when the numbers come in, right, Bob? And then, you know, maybe we're fatter than we thought, and we can look to supporting a new one. I don't know. Okay.
Okay. That's it. Yeah. Go ahead, Skip.
What? I made a motion already.
All right, I'll accept that motion. Second? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.